Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance by our city manager.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in our decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership, Lord. Give us the insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Grant us the humility to always seek your will all the time, Lord. In this name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, Mr. Benson? We have a presentation of parks and recreation on the TAAF athletics.
Texas Amateur Athletic Federation.
Yes.
Anyway, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to come up. You know, you provide us the funds to give activities for the kids to do during the summertime. And the TAFF program kind of continues on through the school. It starts in early springtime and also ends up later in the, I mean, spring anyway, into the fall too. But anyway, the culmination of it all is whenever we go to Games of Texas. And this year, the Games of Texas, like last year, were held here in McAllen. Next year, the Games of Texas will be held at the University of Texas A&amp;M. But anyway, I just wanted to bring the kids in so they can, you know, be recognized and also they can say thank you to you all. But anyway, at this time, I'd like to invite Rick Carter, the Contheatherist, and also George Chopper to come up. And they've got some names to mention who placed what medals at our competition.
Okay.
Again, I'd like to back up Brad's thoughts. Thank you very much for the additional staff. We opened a second site and track, and participation exceeded 100 participants in the track program alone. We qualified 32 athletes to the Games of Texas, came back with five people placing, a third place, a couple of fourths, a couple of fifths. Next year, we want to do split sites, again, veterans and Sherry in the mornings, and the competitive team at veterans in the afternoon with additional coaching. Thank you all very much. Worked out well. Tennis program had about 75 people registered for tennis. There was no need to qualify. Everybody was able to go to state. We came back with two golds and Antonio Lial and Hibi McCoy, three bronze, a 12-under boy's singles, and a boys' doubles team, 16-under. And we got a first place in the consolation bracket. So thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you for the help.
On the swimming part, we had 210 participants, 92 of those that had gone to state. We actually swam in Edinburgh, Texas, at their facility. Off of that, we got four golds, five silvers, and five brons. And off of that, we also got 21 ribbons coming back. Next year, we want to try to grow our swimming program a lot more, and we do want to thank you for letting us swim and continue our program.
Thank you. Do you have some of the boys and girls you're going to present?
We have a few people.
Okay.
Yes.
And a few parents, too. It can't go without saying thank you for the parents. Without the parents, we can't have the kids out here. But it takes a lot of time for the parents because they're taking the kids back and forth from whichever program they're in. But, you know, parents, I thank you all for supporting your kids.
Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations. 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 Double up the lines over there so you can have space for everybody. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations, ma'am. Let's get some of the back here. Get some of the back here. This is a great problem to have. When you get them off the street, put them in front of the truck. Watch your step. Watch your step. Watch your step. Watch your step. Hello. 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 Hello.[496.03]
...Chimney Park and all of the winter Texans that come to the Riverside. I for one have a few rental properties and Mission's top five sites are all going to be behind the wall, so I'd like to keep all of my wonderful aspects of Mission that I take all of my guests to open and free. So I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor, for taking time to speak with us. Again, unbeknownst to me, I had spoke to you all about this already, and later I found out, and I was asked to join this group. And I'm honored to be a part of this group that is fighting for those that cannot speak for themselves. Please take into consideration our beautiful butterflies and our Butterfly Center, our National Butterfly Center, which the Monarch is due to be put on the extinction list by 2019. So hopefully, we can utilize those federal regulations and try to keep the, you know, the infrastructure at a limit. But thank you so much for your time, and we really look forward to working close with y'all on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for having the meeting with me. We'll now go into our public hearings, and we ask Mr. Acevedo to come forward, and we'll start with item 1.1A.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of an 8.853 acres consisting of 7.76 acres out of Lot 1, Pradera's Garasa subdivision, and 1.093 acres out of Lot 161, John 8 Sherry subdivision. The property is currently zoned agriculture-open interim AOI, and the applicant is requesting an R1 designation. The applicant is the Garrigos Herbert Family LP. If the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter mile south of Expressway 83 along the east side of Stewart Road. The surrounding zonings include R1 single-family to the north. To the east and to the west, the properties are zoned ag or agriculture. We do have the Wilson Grain Ditch that abuts the property to the east. And to the south, the property was recently rezoned to R1A large lots and family. There was no public opposition during the PZ meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. There was one property owner that was in opposition of the rezoning, and he is here today in the audience, as is the engineer for the project. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This is where on the south side of the Expressway?
Yes, this is abutting the property, The Legends of Simran, just to the south.
And they're changing from a now...
Currently it's zoned ag. It's zoned ag, and they're going for R1.
I think it's going to hurt the rest of the subdivisions if we start doing an I-1 in an area which should be R1A. The lots should be over 10,000.
The lots that are being proposed in the preliminary plot that we saw are 8,400 and 9,400 square feet.
This ones, the R1?
Yes. The properties to the north, The Legends of Simran, those are 9,000 square feet. And then the Oaks at Simran to the west are 8,400 square feet.
But those are R1A?
Those are R1s.
So they...
So they're more or less...
More or less the same size?
Same size as what's already in the area.
Okay, well, is that the same size? But the ones that are on the north side?
The ones on the north side are 9,000 square feet, the ones at The Legends of Simran.
The others on the south side, I mean?
And then on the south side...
When you say 9,000 for the public, just tell them 9,000 is equal to R1, not R1A.
They're... They do meet the size requirement or the square footage requirement of an R1A, the ones on the north.
Right, but what is the zoning of that area?
It's zoned R1 because they're not that wide.
Okay. Just to...
They're not...
And R1 is what, 6,500?
An R1 is 60, and an R1A is 75 feet wide.
But the R1 is 6,000?
The R1 is minimum of 6,000, yes.
Okay, this is what they were up here of. But they're going to be 9,000?
These are going to be 8,400 and 9,400.
Okay. Vamos. The recommendation is for us to go ahead and approve adoption ordinance 4532?
This is a public hearing. Mayor, go ahead.
I know. Is anybody in favor or against this... this request? Are you in favor or against?
Against.
Okay, well, why are you against?
On behalf of the mayor council...
State your name.
Homer Gonzalez, on behalf of the owner on the southwest side of the property, which is right in that area, yes. Right in that area. We're opposed to that, to the R1 because the surround... I understand that the surrounding locations of the property are 8,000 or 9,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we have some future developments that we want to go ahead and keep the zoning to R1A for all future developments that we plan to do within a year, six months or a year.
But these ones are not R1. They're about 8,400 to 9,000 square feet.
Correct.
This is what we're going to approve today. We're not going to approve a 6,000.
Right.
So are you okay with the 8,400 and 9,000?
I am okay with the lot size, but I'm objecting to the zoning to the R1. I wanted R1A.
Well, they're not going to have any R1 sizes of 6,000.
It's just a frontage. It's our concern.
It's just the lot width.
The lot width, they're not going to be wide enough, and they're not going to marry the properties that we're going to have across the street.
But see, the size is 8,400 to 9,000, which is the same size as an R1A.
Correct. And just a frontage is going to be less than, what, 73 opposed to 60, right?
There's 63 as opposed to 70.
Right.
Wide.
Yes. It'll be okay.
Okay.
So the recommendation, and the recommendation from the staff and the planning and zoning is to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor. Ordinance number?
Ordinance 4532. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Griffin Grill. The address is 1906 East Griffin Parkway, being Lot 19, River Oaks Plaza subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is Ram Culinary Group LLP and care of Richard Kraus. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance and that the property be wet-zoned. On July 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located within a commercial plaza located approximately 1,000 feet west of Glasscock Road on the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant is requesting for the sale and outside consumption of wine and beer. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. A total of six employees will man the operation, and parking is held in common that meets code, and landscaping also meets code in this particular commercial development. There are no churches or schools within 300 feet of the restaurant, nor have there been any complaints against this conditional use permit request. There was no public opposition during the PZ meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for two years. Staff and city manager are recommending approval for two years, at which time the applicant will renew their TABC license and conditional use permit and that the property be wet-zoned. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not...
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 3514 and 3515 in conjunction with item 1.1B.
45 what?
4533 and 4534.
4533 and 4534.
34. Did a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item C. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for the Quince de Septiembre Grito de la Independencia celebration at 1822 North Sherry Road, Banworth Park. And this is an 18.4 acre tract of land out of Lot 235, John 8 Sherry subdivision. This is a one-day event that's being sponsored by Camera de Comercio Internacional, and the applicant is Carlos Moring. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance and that the property be wet-zoned. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located between 20th Street and Sunset Lane along the east side of Sherry Road. The Camera de Comercio Internacional will be hosting a Quince de Septiembre Grito de la Independencia celebration at Banworth Park on September the 15th of 2017, and desires the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol for this one-day event. The event will have music, comedians, kids, game area, a singing and a grito competition, as well as raffle of prizes and the official grito de la Independencia at 11:00 p.m. to close the celebration. The hours of operation will be on one day only, Friday, September the 15th, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., with alcohol sales ending at 11:00 p.m. A total of 10 staffers are being proposed, as long as, as well as seven volunteers. There are a total of 200 parking spaces that will be used for this event, and the applicant is also making arrangements with Sheraland School District to use their parking facilities and shuttle people to and from the parking lot to the park. The sale of alcohol, there are no churches or public or private schools within 300 feet of the subject site, thus they are compliant with Chapter 6 of Section 6-4. However, Chapter 70, Section 70-4 of the Parks Ordinance states that alcohol consumption must cease at 10:00 p.m. in all public parks. This CEP would require a waiver of that section of the code. The Camera de Comercio Internacional did not have any opposition for this conditional use permit, and they chose Mission as a site because a lot of people have chosen, a lot of people from Mexico have chosen Mission as their home. There was no public opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval for the one-day event. Staff is recommending approval for the one-day event, subject to the organizers coordinating with PD and Fire to ensure security personnel for this event, that the council also waived Chapter 70, Section 70-4 of the code, which limits consumption of alcohol past 10:00 p.m. in public parks, and that the grito contest be moved back to 9:30 p.m. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation from the staff is to go ahead and approve...
Mayor, I move that we approve this.
Ordinance 4535. We do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve the request. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. This is the first time we let them use alcohol in our parks. I hope everything goes okay. If not, we won't have, we're not going to be able to do it next time. So, okay. Item D? Mr. Benson?
Mayor and City Council. I have before you item 1.1D. Public hearing is proposed resolution regarding the seminar of a grant application to Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Grant Program. This is a public hearing is needed for participation in a local park grant program. The application will be for the development of a tennis complex at Birdwell Park. This 50/50 matching grant application will be for $500,000. Staff and city manager recommend this approval. The item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this? Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not...
Mayor, I move that we approve the local park grant program application.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting, Mayor, but this is just a public hearing. There'll be another item for this.
Okay, well, okay.
In the same...
I withdraw my...
Next item?
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go on to item 2.0. The disposition of minutes that we had for the city council meeting on July the 24th of 2017. Do you need a motion to approve the minutes?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 3.0, we need to acknowledge the recipients of the minutes that we had for the Mission Educational Development Council. The special meeting was held on April the 20th of 2017, Parks Liberation Board meeting on May the 9th of 2017, and the Citizens Advisory Committee met on June the 20th of 2017. We do have to acknowledge the minutes. We do need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the acknowledgement receipts of the minutes stated of the committee's mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.0 is the approval of 4.1. Mr. Acevedo, is the final plan approval for Charlene Rockstone Manner?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is a final plan approval for a 10-lot subdivision on the west side of Glasscock Road between 495 and Business 83. This is a 10-lot, single-family subdivision. Water, sewer, and street and capital sewer recoveries have all been paid, and the subdivision has passed inspections. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval. Item 4.1 is now before you.
Okay, so your recommendation?
Approval. So move, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.2, Mr. Flores?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 4.2 is the approval of memorandum of understanding with Mission Consolidated Independent School District in regards of the use of the Sheraland Municipal Golf Course. For Mission CISD's 2017-2018 school year, Sheraland Golf Course will provide range and playing privileges for the high schools and junior highs in the district at a yearly cost of $14,000. The agreement has been approved by Mission CISD, and if there are no questions, staff and city manager recommendation is approval.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. 4.3 is the approval of the golf club storage agreement with Mission CISD and the Sheraland Municipal Golf Course. For Mission CISD's 2017-2018 school year, Sheraland Golf Course will provide a designated secured storage area for golf clubs and bags in a caged area in the golf course basement. Only coaches will have a key to access the caged area. The agreement has been approved by Mission CISD. If there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do have a recommendation. Need a motion for the approval?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, 4.4, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Sheraland School District in regards to the use of Sheraland Municipal Golf Course. For Sheraland ISD's 2017-2018 school year, Sheraland Golf Course will provide range and playing privileges for the high schools and junior highs in the district at the same cost of, yearly cost of $14,000. This agreement has been approved by Sheraland ISD, and if there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion. We have a recommendation.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. 4.5 is the approval of the golf club storage agreement with Sheraland ISD and the Sheraland Municipal Golf Course. For Sheraland ISD's 2017-2018 school year, Sheraland Golf Course will provide a designated secured storage area of golf clubs and bags in a caged area in the golf course basement. Only coaches will have a key to the caged area. The agreement has been approved by Sheraland ISD, and if there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we have a recommendation? We need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. 4.6.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On item 4.6, we need approval to enter into interlocal agreement between Mission, between the City of Mission and Mission CISD to jointly undertake the youth services at Castro Elementary and Lial Elementary. For Mission CISD's 2017-2018 school year, to provide after-school programs at Castro Elementary and Lial Elementary campuses. Agreement has been approved by Mission CISD. If you all have any questions, staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion from...
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4.7, approval to enter into interlocal agreement between Mission, the City of Mission and Sheraland ISD to jointly undertake the youth services at Jesse Jensen Elementary for Sheraland ISD's 2017-2018 school year, to provide after-school programs at Jesse Jensen Elementary. Agreement has been approved by Sheraland ISD. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson, 4.9, the approval of interlocal agreement.
Mayor and City Council. Item 4.18 is for the approval of interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District regarding an auditorium facility at Banworth Park and at Mayberry Pool. This is for the MCISD's 2017 and 2018 school year for the use of both Banworth and Mayberry Pools at a yearly cost of $10,200. Agreement has been approved by Mission CISD. If there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend this approval.
We do have a recommendation from our city manager?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 4.19 is for approval of interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and Sheraland Independent School District regarding an auditorium facility at Banworth Park and Mayberry Pool. This is for Sheraland Independent School District 2017-2018 school year for the use of both Banworth and Mayberry Pools at a yearly cost of $15,390. Agreement has been approved by Sheraland ISD. If there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend this approval.
The recommendation from our city manager? We need a motion to approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. I have before you item 4.10, I mean 4.10, is authorization to engage Sally Gablick DBA Park Recreation and Sports LLC for contractual services for grant writing for Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a local park grant program. The contract is for the creation, oversight, and filing for the grant for the proposed tennis complex at Birdwell Park at a cost of $3,000. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
We have a recommendation to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Ms. Gablick is in the audience. Have you had any questions for her?
The approval of a resolution?
Okay. Item 4.11 is approval of resolution number...
1516.
1516 for the City Council of City of Mission, Texas, regarding the seminar of an application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Local Park Grant Program and authorizing the mayor as the authorized representative regarding the city's participation in this program. This is for the purpose of the development of a tennis complex at Birdwell Park. Grant request will be for $500,000. Matching funds will be made available through Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. Staff and city manager recommend your approval.
Do we have a recommendation?
Let me make, I'm sorry, excuse me, sir. I want to make a quick correction. The matching funds are being provided by the City of Mission.
That's correct.
And Valley Baptist is a grant received from their organization.
Well, we're using the $500,000 from Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation as a matching grant, as the match for the grant, and we'll still be participating with our funds, too.
Okay, so when you submit the grant, Sally, you're submitting the grant through that being the matching funds? Or, I just want to clarify that, because my understanding is that the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation is a grant to the City of Mission. However, we already have half a million in our budget to participate in the matching grant.
But we have to use their money as the match to get the 20 points for the grant. So even though it comes to you, we're using their letter as the match, and we're using your money as the overage for the grant.
I just want to make sure that Texas Parks and Wildlife is fine with that...
Yes.
...at the submission of the grant.
Yes.
Okay. That has been confirmed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for clarification.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.12, authorization to award bid for the installation of striping, private markings, and crack seal on a convenient basis for the City of Mission. We receive one bid response, and we recommend award to Valley Striping meeting all specifications in the amount of $64,888. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Okay, we have a recommendation to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
413?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're seeking authorization to solicit bids for pre-employment screenings. The one-year contract with the two renewal options have been exhausted. We're seeking authorization to solicit RFPs, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Need a motion to approve?
For approval, Mayor?
Second, Mayor.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Thank you. 414, Mr. Perez?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 4.14 is the authorization for the City of Mission to enter into memorandum of understanding addendum with clear result to extend the participation of the 2017 AEP Texas City Smart Program. And this program is designated to help municipalities identify energy efficiency programs and opportunities with new and existing buildings. There is a monetary incentive provided to implement these opportunities. The program is funded through AEP, and there's no cost to the city. Clear result is consulting will be providing the service, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a recommendation to approve? We need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. Item four point fifteen is a discussion and action on proposed 2017 tax rate and take record vote and schedule public hearings. As per the Texas Property Tax Code, City Council must provide a tax rate for the City of Mission. The calculated effective tax rate is .5050 per 100 valuation. The calculated rollback tax rate is .5762 per $100 valuation. The current tax rate is .4962 per 100 valuation. And this year's certified values are at $4,134,332,814. And last year's values were at $4,794,16450. The recommendation this year is to propose a tax rate of .4862, and we would need to take a record vote on this, Mayor. And the said public hearing date for the tax rate would be on August the 28th, 2017. Our recommendation is to approve.
Okay, we do need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
To approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, excuse me, on this one, we're going to need record votes, so we're going to take an individual vote for each council.
Okay, so we need a right-hand vote?
That's correct. Well, weakest?
You vote in favor?
Aye.
You vote in favor? I vote in favor.
Thank you, sir.
We would have to call for the public hearing already, but... Point fourteen, we call for a public hearing?
It's listed for August the 28th.
It's August, it's for August the 28th.
August the 28th.
The 28th?
Yes, sir. For next city council meeting.
Yes, I told that, yeah. Okay, point sixteen.
Yes, item four point sixteen is authorize city manager to execute amended lease agreement between City of Mission and Yucca Street Investment LLC. Mayor and council members, the current lease for the Community Development Office will end on August 30th, 2017. The new term for the lease will be a five-year term effective September the 1st, 2017. The new rent shall be fixed at $1,412 per month for a total of $16,944 per year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, so these are the new recommendations?
Yes, sir.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Point seventeen.
I'll be presenting on behalf of Judge Mooremeister, item four point seventeen, authorization to purchase from CPM Design via state-approved contract for flooring materials and installation for the municipal court facility via buyboard contract 5/2016. Purchase from CPM Design to include carpet, vinyl flooring, vinyl base will be removed and replaced in the reception office area, hallway, three rooms, two courtrooms, and bailiffs office at a cost of $25,578.77. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do have a recommendation to approve? Need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Are they going to keep the same color scheme, or they're picking something more?
We're picking something else, something different. We're giving them options.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Dominguez, point eighteen.
Mayor, City Council, item four point eighteen, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to re-enter into an interlocal agreement for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and Mission CISD for the 2017-2018 school year. Mission CISD is requesting seven educational resource officers for 2017-18 school year. The total amount of the contract is $352,539.67 for a 174-day contract. Mission CISD approved the contract on August the 9th. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do have a motion to approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Point nineteen, Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to re-enter into an interlocal agreement for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and Sherri Land ISD for the 2017-2018 school year. Sherri Land School District is requesting six educational resource officers for the school year. The total amount of the contract is $315,819.54 for a 179-day contract. Sherri Land ISD School Board approved the contract on July the 24th, 2017. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, City Council, item four point twenty, authorization to accept the 2016 Operation Stone Garden program grant from the Office of the Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division, grant number 3172902. The total amount of the grant is $250,000. $130,880 will be utilized to pay overtime for police officers patrolling the City of Mission and the U.S.-Mexican border. $119,120 will be utilized to purchase two new police Chevrolet Tahos and the equipment needed to outfit them. Staff and the city manager recommend approval to accept this grant.
Do we have a motion of recommendation? We need a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, City Council, item four point twenty-one, is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract a total of two police Chevrolet Tahos and all necessary equipment to equip the two new police units under buyboard contract 5/21-16. The Office of the Governor's through the Operation Stone Garden 2016 has provided grant funds to purchase two police vehicles and the equipment needed to outfit them. The total amount of the purchase of the two police vehicles and the equipment is $119,120. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this item for purchase.
We do have a motion to, we need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Four point twenty-two is the authorization to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the City of Mission and La Jolla Independent School District to assist in a district-sponsored police officer mentorship and leadership program. The mentorship and leadership program is designed to assist at-risk students attending La Jolla schools. We ourselves have two elementary schools and a middle schools within our city limits. The City of Mission Police Department will provide plainclothes police officers once a month for two hours to assist with the program. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve?
I move for approval, Mayor?
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Four point two-three is the authorization to accept the FY 2017-2018 Other Victim Assistance Grant from the Office of the Attorney General's Crime Victim Services Division. The grant will allow the Mission Police Department to, the opportunity to continue our crime victim liaison services through this grant. The grant is for $42,000. The program will be in operation September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval to accept this grant from the Office of the Attorney General.
We do need a motion to approve this grant?
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
We do have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item four point two-four, Mayor, City Council, is authorization to enter into a state plan of operation between the State of Texas and the City of Mission Police Department regarding access Department of Defense personnel property. The State of Texas to the Department of Public Safety in Austin, Texas, provided the Mission Police Department with an MRAP vehicle for our SWAT team. The state plan of operation is designed to track the MRAP vehicle and other equipment provided to us by the Department of Defense through the Texas DPS Office in Austin. The state plan is required by the State of Texas on an yearly basis. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this plan.
We do need a motion to approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Point twenty-five. Don't tell me you all don't have any money.
Item four point twenty-five is a budget amendment, approval of the attached budget amendment in the Designated Purpose Fund, which is our grant fund. This amendment is to allocate funds received from the Office of the Governor's Homeland for the Operation Stone Garden grant in the amount of $250,000. It will pay for overtime and for two patrol units. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
This is the money that we're getting, they're transferring into, okay.
That's correct, sir.
We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We can't thank the governor enough for helping us so much. We need to send him a letter? Sign by me? Point twenty-six?
Item four point twenty-six is the approval of a resolution of the City Council for the City of Mission amending resolution number 1407, adopting the public funds, investment policy, and strategy. This is a resolution that we adopt annually as required per chapter 2256 of the Texas Government Code. There were no changes made to the policy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
The resolution is 1536?
1517.
1517?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move that we approve resolution 1517, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the resolution and the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. You're back again.
Okay, I accept that. Back again. I have before you, item four point two-seven is authorization for the submission of a grant application to Kaboom, this play community construction grant, and authorizing the mayor the authorized representative regarding the city's participation in this program. Authorized to submit the grant application for $15,000 for redevelopment and revitalization of play structures at a cost, at an maximum cost to the city of $40,000. While this is also authorizing the mayor as authorized representative, staff and city manager recommend this approval.
Do we have a motion? We do need a motion to approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The kids, thank you.
Item four twenty-eight?
You're twice, man. Can you get away?
Okay, item four point two-eight, authorization to solicit bids for the construction of a buffer wall. The six-foot buffer wall is to be constructed of concrete block between Mission Special Events Center and the Neighbors to the East. Estimated cost is $60,000. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
We do need a motion for the approval?
Mayor, so, so move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Let's, um... We do not have any unfinished business. We do have, I think, an executive session.
You all have any comments, Mayor?
Huh?
No comments? Mayor's comments are sitting?
Oh, I don't have any comments. But we didn't, we didn't go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to VTC A Government Code Section 551.001, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second to go into executive session? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We'll be out in a few minutes.
Mayor, I will, I move we reconvene, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, having coming, having come out of executive session, item 7.1A, consultation with attorney seeking advice and possible action regarding contemplated litigation as it relates to Texas Senate Bill 1004 relating to the deployment of network nodes in public right-of-ways. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager to engage the firm of Bickerstaff Heath Elgado Acosta LLP for the purpose of joining with the City of McAllen and other Texas municipalities in the litigation challenging the constitutionality of Senate Bill 1004 pursuant to the terms of the engagement letter.
Mayor, I so move.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, Council, item 7.2A, this is consideration of the use of eminent domain of a .037 of an acre parcel out of lot 18 Basham Subdivision Unit Number Seven. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to approve resolution number 1518, authorizing city manager, city attorney, or outside designated council the use of eminent domain on behalf of the State of Texas to acquire a .037 of an acre, 1,600 square feet, parcel of land situated in Hidalgo County, Texas, and as, also being a part or portion of lot 18 Basham Subdivision Unit Number Seven, according to the plat or map thereof recorded in Volume 211, page 192 of the map records, for the public purpose of construction or improvement of Inspiration Road, and to resolve or acquire any necessary right-of-ways related to the project.
I move for approval of resolution 1518, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve? The measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.